I'm going to call to order. I'm going to unmute myself. I'm going to call to order our Tuesday, December 7th, common council meeting. Carrie, will you please take the role?
Hesch.
Here.
Went.
Here.
Britton.
Here.
Bart.
Here.
Lipt.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Schmidt. Wetzel.
Here.
Romline.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in such allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its public voting stands on one nation, under one indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Great. The first item on our agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from November 16th and November 23rd. If I ask for any comment, I do have one adjustment to the minutes. So from the minutes of November 16th, we had ordinance 21-47. We had erroneously written in the minutes that it would be the first, that we waived the first reading. So we would just need the minutes to reflect that ordinance 21-47 was a first reading and not a second reading. So that'll be, the clerk will make those adjustments. Does anyone else have any adjustments or comments on any of, either of those minutes? All right. Our next item is comments and suggestions from citizens present. If anyone would like to comment, you can come to the microphone. I should have mentioned to you, Erin, in all of my gabbing, did you fill out a pink form?
I did not.
Okay.
I still fill out.
You can still come up and make a comment, but just fill one out before you leave so we can get your name and address correctly for the minutes.
Okay.
So if anyone would like to comment, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Erin Schreider. My address is 1411 South 10th Street, Watertown, 53094. I guess I had some concerns about a citywide noise ordinance. I feel like if there are certain issues, I think that we need to take care of an issue instead of placing, instead of basically what I feel is displacing the issue. I feel like if we take care of the issue instead of putting restrictions on everybody, I think that that would be more fair. I think that there are a lot of people that act neighborly, and I think that if we start saying that this is the new ordinance, I think that it's going to actually probably create more issues than make less issues. And I don't, I don't think that this is, if it's a neighborhood issue and not just a business issue, I think that they have to find a way to live next to each other instead of being a tit for tat. If it's a business issue, we have to look at that business and make sure that that business conducts themselves better, becomes more neighborly, finds a common way to do business in a more residential area. Those were some of the concerns that I had. By, I mean, saying that it's a noisy ordinance, I don't know a lot of people that really have bans unless they're doing ban practices at their house. I don't know that that's a common issue that people are having. I know that people do have, I would say, more parties. I mean, I think that a lot of people have done a lot of investment in home improvements on their houses, especially since COVID, because they haven't been able to come out and do things out and about that they have. I mean, I don't know, maybe this would be a question for Jacob. How many building permits have been given out in the last year to improve on their homes, in their garages, on their decks, in areas that they're entertaining people? I mean, is that something that's going to get one neighbor to be calling on the other neighbor? Well, you know, this person had a birthday party in the summer after a football game or a baseball game or whatever sports. They had dinner at 8:30, which is still light o'clock, or light out. And so I call on that neighbor because I'm upset because they're doing a late dinner at 8:00. Well, then, say at 6:30 in the winter, when it's already dark out, I'm doing something that's loud, and now that neighbor's still mad because in the summer I called on them, and now they're calling on me at 6:30. It just doesn't seem, it seems like it's more so displacing the problem instead of taking care of what the true problem is. And I think we need to look at each problem individually, and I know that it's hard to do that in a law aspect, but if there's one person that's being the problem, we have to take care of that one problem instead of placing restrictions on all of us in the community.
Thank you. I should mention for anyone who has a public, and I don't know if you have or not, you probably have, public comment feels a little weird because we can't actually speak back to you.
Okay.
So if you have questions, I try to flag the right staff member if they're here to chat with you, but otherwise, we're not allowed to debate back.
Okay.
I know it seems kind of awkward.
Right. Okay, I'll fill out his list.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Cara Pugh. I live at N 8535, Houston Road, Watertown. I do live in the township of Exonia. However, I'm the owner of Biggs Bar and Grill, Tipsy Goose, and Local Waters, all of which are, I guess, our restaurant, tavern, bar, entertainment-type centers in Watertown. I have never had an experience where we have been too loud. The police have never come to me, or my neighbors haven't come to me to discuss the loudness at any of my properties. And I like to think I run a really tight ship at all my properties. However, you know, what if someday I want to get outdoor music? And I know, I know there are concerns. I know there's concerns in this industry in the city of Watertown right now. However, my concern is that we are, we're just not addressing, addressing the reason we have this concern. I guess, I, I was a middle school teacher. I never, I was, I practiced love and logic. I never penalized the whole class for a bad choice by one student. So why are we penalizing everybody in this industry? Or, you know, what if you live by the high school and you're not an advocate for high school football? Maybe you're really an advocate for soccer, and the football announcer is getting too loud, and, and suddenly you are concerned and you call the police. I think there's too much discretion in this. If we could have some sort of clear boundaries, like the sound cannot be heard from so many feet from your property, or potentially the decibel level. I just, when there's discretion, especially, you know, being a public educator for 14 years, you tried, you tried to have rules that were just kind of black and white, because whenever there's discretion, then we, then we enter in personalities. And maybe not everybody thinks Cara Pugh, or Local Waters, or Biggs Bar, Tipsy Goose are phenomenal. And then, if they don't like me, this, this could be a tool used to potentially put some of my business operations at risk. And I, I love rules, I believe in rules, I believe in the city of Watertown. However, I just don't know if this is quite a rule that we want to dive into like this when, when it seems like it's not the majority that are breaking the rules. And, and I think, you know, I think we all know where this issue lies, and maybe, you know, maybe there needs to be like a permit process before you can do something outdoors. Maybe we need to, you know, inform so many agencies so many days before. I don't, I don't know what the process would be. I just ask that you consider, I just ask that you really consider this rule because, you know, even our Chamber of Commerce had outdoor entertainment for the 100th anniversary. That probably would have not fell into this ordinance. What about outdoor worship? I know many of our local religious groups have outdoor worship at the park. Maybe you're an atheist and you find their hymn, their hymns annoying. You know, where, where do we draw the line in this? So, I don't know, like, I'm not, I guess, I think I know where the problem is, and, and I would, I've talked to the people, and I would love for that to end. And I would love for the people who are living in that neighborhood to have, you know, more confidence in their ability to sleep at night, but at the same time, I guess I'm just here to be like, where, where do we draw the line then? So, okay, thank you for listening to my awkward conversation.
Anybody else?
I'm not really prepared, but I'll try, I'll try to say something. Danielle Glazer, 1405 Oconomowoc Avenue, apartment 7. I'm new to this. I work at the gas house, been there for a while. Going off of what Cara said, there's got to be intense scrutiny on what this, who's going to be, who's breaking the ordinance and who's not. Luther Prep has their football games, I can hear it from the gas house. If we have a parade going on and they have a band and somebody's living on Main Street that's trying to sleep during the day because they work at night, I mean, who's, who's getting punished and who's not? You chose, none of these bars in Watertown have become a bar within the last year or two. These bars have been a bar for years. So if you chose to live next to one, you chose to live next to, just like if you choose to live next to a, a grade school, you're going to hear those kids outside. You're choosing to live next to a bar that's got bands that is going to cause noise during the day. So I guess that's pretty much what it comes down to is where, where's the, where's the line drawn in this? Thank you.
Anybody else? Who would like to comment? Right, and virtually looks like we just had Andrew from City Staff. Okay, we have no public hearings, so let's go to committee reports. We have the Finance Committee of November 16th, Plan Commission from October 25th and November 8th, the Public Works Commission of November 9th and 23rd, and Public Safety and Welfare from November 3rd. Comments, questions on any of those? Okay? We have no old business, no communications and recommendations, no new business, so let's go to the accounts payable.
Madam Mayor, I hope, I move to bail nonpayable.
I hope and move. Motion by Romline.
Yes.
With a second by Wetzel. Let's honor Mr. Romline's wishes. Hope we pass these. Any comments? Carrie. Romline.
Aye.
Hesch.
Aye.
Went.
Epstein.
Britton.
Epstein.
Bart.
Aye.
Lipt.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
All right, very good. Next is reports in miscellaneous business. We have the Airport Commission minutes from November 10th, the Board of Health from October 14th, the Committee of the Hall from November 16th, Historic Preservation and Downtown Design from October 20th and November 10th, the Licensing Board from November 10th, Main Street minutes from October 19th, Recreeration and Forestry from November 1st, payroll from November 3rd to November 6th. I'm going to need them to write these out and not do numbers going forward. The Redevelopment Authority of October 28th, the Site Plan Review Minutes from November 22nd, Tourism from November 18th, and the Youth Advisory Committee from October 20th. Does anybody have any comments or questions on any of those? All right. We have no licenses, so let's go to our ordinances. The first is ordinance 21-43. This is to repeal and recreate Chapter 550 of our zoning code, Article 12, signs and projections. This was tabled at our November 2nd common council meeting. This is now here from myself in the Plan Commission on the first reading.
Motion to approve 2143.
Thank you. Motion by Lipt, second by Bartz. So I'll provide just a little bit of facts. So based, thank you guys for submitting your feedback. That was very helpful. A lot of you did send stuff in. Jacob went through it and then went through it with me as well. And there were some, there was some differentiation in like certain numbers. Some people said five, some said three, some said four. So what you have before you is, may not look exactly like what you submitted, but it was kind of a compromise and a condensing of all the feedback that we did receive. That you'll, I think you track changed, if I remember correctly.
Correct, in my memo.
And, and in the memo as well. Okay. So the changes from the last version should be obvious to you in the memo and in a track change. Did we submit a track change version though? Or just the memo?
It's, it's the change, it had the blue and white.
It does, okay. Oh yeah, now I see one. Questions? Mr. Lipt.
I just want to say that I appreciate the changes that were made. I think this looks much better. I certainly can support it now. The several things that were done, I think, are really positive. The street frontage definition seems very workable. Yard sign category is much better, so I appreciate the work you've done.
Thank you. Anybody else on this one? Okay. Carrie. Roll call. Yes, please. Lipt.
Aye.
Hesch.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bart.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Romline.
Aye.
Very good. Good job, Jacob. All right, let's go to ordinance 21-44. This is to amend after 457 Streets and Sidewalks through the repeal of Section 457-10, daily notice signs. This was also tabled at our November 2nd meeting. This is here from Aldrin Wetzel in Public Works on the first reading.
Motion 2144.
Second by Wetzel, second, is that a Romline's second?
Yeah.
Second by Romline. Discussion on this one? Carrie. Wetzel.
Aye.
Romline.
Aye.
Hesch.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bart.
Aye.
Lipt.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is ordinance 21-48. This is to amend Chapter 253, building construction through removal and addition of language to Section 253-10, violations and penalties in our city code. This is here from Aldrin Romline in Public Safety and Welfare on the first reading.
I'll move for 2148.
Thank you. Motion by Romline, second by Lipt. Questions or comments on this one? All right, Carrie. Romline.
Aye.
Hesch.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
Bart.
Aye.
Lipt.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
All right, next is ordinance 21-49. This is to create Section 550, excuse me, 500-3, print B, stop intersection in Section 500-6, print A, print 2, no parking and loading zones. This is also here from Aldrin Romline in Public Safety and Welfare on the first reading.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Motion by Bartz.
I'll second.
Second by Lipt. Not everybody at once, okay? Discussion on this one? All right, Carrie. Bart.
Aye.
Lipt.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Romline.
Aye.
Hesch.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Britton.
Aye.
All right. Next then is ordinance 21-47. This is to amend Section 410-40E, loud and unnecessary noise of Chapter 420, peace and good order, Article 7, noise, cover city code. This is here from Aldrin Romline in Public Safety and Welfare on the second reading.
Madam Chairman, I move for this to put it on the table for discussion.
All right. Motion by Romline, second by Wetzel. Comments? Questions? Anybody? Mr. Britton.
Can I just have, maybe Jacob be the best one, just to have a summary of changes?
Yeah, so the big, I can summarize this one. This is actually the chief's section of code. The, the only change here is the removal of the 10pm.
Correct. It just takes out the timeframe from 10pm to 7am. Otherwise, the, or rest of the ordinance, and it's only in this section, Section E. Otherwise, the rest of the ordinance stands and does not change.
So all this change would do is say that no persons shall operate or play any radio, television, phonograph, which I had to ask what that was, a drum, a musical instrument, or similar noise-making device in such a manner to create a noise of disturbance of such volume or nature to annoy or disturb a reasonable person of normal sensitivities between 10pm and 7am. That 10pm to 7am is the only omission or change.
So this has been on the books for a while, and how often is it? I imagine this is one of those complaint-driven policing items, so how often do we get calls for noise? It depends. I would say we probably get a couple a weekend on noise, and it just varies on what it is. It could be noise at a house, it could be car stereos, things like that. It could be, it could come from a bar. It doesn't always. Mayor did a ride-along, I think she went on one or two that were not related to bars at all, so.
And the tough part about, even the ones I was on, if they came in before 10 o'clock, there's nothing that could be done, and they were loud.
Sure.
And they weren't, they weren't at a bar. Yes, please.
Chief, can you tell us what happens when you arrive at the scene? Is there, is there a discussion? Is there a citation?
Absolutely. So, just like anything else that we do, it's an investigation. And I know people are hung up on the word of reasonableness, but, you know, there's a lot of things that we do are reasonable, whether we issue a ticket on a speeding citation or not. Same thing here. We look for cooperation, we talk to people. We're still going to investigate, and I would say 99% of the time, people cooperate and turn things down. And the one-off, that we get one phone call about somebody complaining about their neighbor, well, that's not reasonable, you know, for us that we're going to come out there and issue a citation or something like that. So it's got to be reasonable. There's got to be some investigation and, and something behind it, not just a, a neighbor dispute.
Are you opening up the door for more complaints throughout the day by doing this?
I don't think so. I don't think we get calls that are during the day, and I don't.
Well, I would, because before it was strictly 10 to 7, so nobody's going to call them.
But I don't think your average, I don't think your average citizen knows a timeframe when they have a complaint. I think if your average citizen has a complaint about something, they're going to call us no matter what it is, and no matter what time it is, they're just going to call us and complain. So if that's noise at 10am or noise at 10pm, they're going to call and complain if they want to call and complain. And, you know.
Okay.
Again, that's on us then to go out and have a chat and investigate and see where it goes.
So you get a couple of complaints a weekend, but how many actual citations are you writing, chief?
Very few. Very few. I mean, just in the average weekend, like, like I said, the two that you probably went on, we didn't issue one ticket. So, and like I said, the majority of the time, people cooperate, and we always can start with a written warning. I mean, we have, have that in our system, and a lot of times, that's what we do, is we give somebody a warning. And that way, that kind of builds that history, so that if we do have to keep going back, then we can say, well, you know, they've been warned, they've gotten a written warning three times in the past year. You know, this, this seems to be a problem. And we can move to the next level of issuing a citation.
So then why are we getting, why, why are we taking out the time if it's really never been a problem before and/or you don't issue citations that often?
So we did some research on this because it did come up, and we're probably one of the last cities that have a timeframe in their ordinance. So just looking at places around us, Oconomowoc, Oconomowoc, you have it in front of you. It's super simple. They have no timeframes, they have two sentences. That's their entire loud and unnecessary noise ordinance. So let's talk vague and let's talk reasonable. This, it's right there. Where ours is several, I mean, you're, this is Section E, so that means there's many different sections of our ordinance ahead of that. So, and I, and I could name off others that are around us, others away from us that I've researched as well, and Sandy, our paralegal, did the same as well, took a look at it. And we're one of the few that still keep a timeframe in there, because it does tie your hands then to anything else that could possibly happen.
I guess maybe it's the rest of the ordinance, the wording on it. I mean, somebody's going to have their TV loud because they have a hearing problem, and the neighbor next door is going to call.
That's not reasonable for us to issue a ticket, though.
But, but it's not reasonable, but that's opening up the door for somebody to come, for somebody to call and just complain.
I get lots of calls.
So.
So I just, just, I want to just level set a little. So I pulled up the ordinance here, and just even looking at, and I realize for somebody this may be small, but even just looking at the first, you know, A, that talks about vehicles. You know, B talks very specifically about accelerating and braking, and, you know, D is talking about snowmobile operation. So this whole section is about loud and unnecessary noise. It's just the section that, so none of those other things, some of them have times, some don't. So this, this item in particular is one of the few that has a time remaining. If I, I'll come back to, I just want to finish, so one other, just again, level-setting item. If you're on the licensing board, we've been going through Chapter 220 for months, which is fantastic. I really appreciate all the feedback and the commentary we've had. We know that because of the, the work that we're doing on 410, we did some work in 550, we're doing work in 220, these all kind of surround noise in one way or another. So some of, actually, all the council members were emailed noise standards from the city of Oconomowoc. That's their zoning code that was emailed to you all. We have something very similar in our zoning code as well. Decibels, Jacob does it. What we've talked about at our last internal meeting, that we'll go back to the licensing board on December 15th, is Jacob is one person, he's not a sworn police officer, he's the one with the decibel meter. He can't be running around going to all these phone calls. So we know that in the revisions that will have to be made to 220 that will go to the licensing board, we will certainly have to have some time carve out for some of the things you heard our public comment speak to, like, you know, bands and, and outdoor music events, things that people are having at their establishments, a bags tournament, things that could cause higher levels of noise. And we're going to, we keep going back to the licensing board to see if we're getting closer to what they're looking for to allow those events to happen within reason. Right now, they're, they can happen all the time, we're trying to dial that in, so there's some balance for residents. So I, the comments that you heard today were from some of our local establishment owners, and they are participating in that, those revisions to Chapter 220 as well. The one other thing that I, I can factually want to state is from a conversation with the chief, I blatantly asked about, you know, the parades and celebrations, and he's like, well, that's not reasonable. That happens, you know, once. That's not something happening over and over again. So, Mr. Britton.
You already explained what I was going to bring up was permitting and everything that goes on with, with that, so you stole my thunder.
Oh, sorry. I was just factually stating information, but if you wanted to debate it, you go right ahead.
Nope.
Okay. Others? Comments? Mr. Hesch.
Just curious, if someone, chief, if someone continues to complain, do you have the authority to issue citation for excessive?
Complaining?
Complaints?
No.
Answer that very clearly.
No.
How do you handle, I mean, because some people just become unreasonable, and then they're, they're exhausting our, our resources in law enforcement and creating their own nuisance in that regard. I mean, is that something we should evaluate addressing to, to give latitude that direction as well?
I don't know that there's any department that's doing anything like that, though. I mean, we have things for, you know, using 911 inappropriately, you know, stuff like that. Somebody who calls us a lot, you know, it just depends. We, we probably will talk to them on the phone if, if responding to them in person isn't necessary, but I'll probably have my people err on the benefit of at least talking to people, and.
I mean, I observed a frequent flyer caller during my ride-along.
I don't know that there's any department that's doing anything like that, though. I mean, we have things for, you know, using 911 inappropriately, you know, stuff like that. Somebody who calls us a lot, you know, it just depends. We, we probably will talk to them on the phone if, if responding to them in person isn't necessary, but I'll probably have my people err on the benefit of at least talking to people. And.
I mean, I observed a frequent flyer caller during my.
Yeah, a good, a good term, right.
And it was, you know, spoke to the person and checked it out and kind of just reassured them that everything was fine. So what I observed was just very patient, careful response. It's kind of a.
Well, I know, and you can't cry wolf because you never know when it'll be a real situation. Right, I get it, so.
Again, we're always err probably on the side of listening to people and talking to them, and if it warrants it, we'll respond and investigate.
Is there anything that allows for a false police report citation?
Not a citation, but that you can be charged if you file a false police report.
Yeah.
Yep.
I'll just, I guess my last remarks as it relates to this. I'd be you guys as peace officers, and I use the word peace because that's really your goal, to try to maintain peace and civility in the community. So I would be in favor of something where you have the latitude to do what you need to, but obviously, you're going to use your investigation and your discretion accordingly. But I guess for me, it makes sense to give you that latitude and then let you determine it more so than not have any recourse. And then here you are with situations that we're back in this council trying to figure out how to react after there's been, you know, situations that have yet to be resolved. So, just trying to keep the peace, I get it.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this one? Mr. Ritten.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 2147 as presented. I think it was.
We had a motion to bring it to the floor.
Yeah, we had.
He was careful about that, though.
We had a motion to table for discussion was the last motion that was made.
Bring it to the table.
Bring it to the table for discussion, is what he motioned.
Oh.
So he wasn't motioning to approve. Right, you motioned to bring it to the floor for discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And now we have a motion to approve. That was very careful, no, we have, people do that very rarely, so I don't blame you on that one. Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Barts. So a motion by Ritten, a second by Barts. Anybody else? Let's take the roll.
I was just going to say, I just, I think that the whole thing needs to be relooked at before we make that decision on time. I think wording of the ordinance should be done first to make sure that it's cohesive before we cut out time on it.
In 220, you mean?
Yeah, in, in totality. I mean, because if you're going to keep doing piecemeal, we're going to keep coming back and revising this over and over again.
Anybody else?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand what you meant by that, Aldwin. So is there other sections of this code that contradict this?
Well, there's other sections of the code that don't have timestamp to it. This is the only one that has a timestamp to it.
We, so we're updating.
And we're removing that.
We're updating other sections of our code that pertain to outdoor commercial entertainment that veers into noise sometimes, but not all the time. It veers into zoning sometimes, but not all the time. Jacob's zoning code, that's the decibel reader, those are for more habitual, a lot of people that have conditional use permits, categories that fall into the zoning code. Yes, we could have every single noise complaint that the PD receives, call Jacob and he could go to a decibel meter. It's just not practical for us. And the meters are, yeah, so that's, we have three sections of code that talk about noise. We've updated 550? Have we made updates to it?
Do we need exceptions for public festivals and for.
Yes.
Like Riverside, like Riverfest and things like that.
We, so we made exceptions for those. 220 is just literally about outdoor commercial entertainment, that is for licensed establishments. This one is for the entire city. So you have your backyard party and it's, you know, loud at, you know, 9:45. There's nothing right now that can be done. We have to say, I'm sorry, you have to wait 15 minutes, and then we can see if it could shut off. So that's the best example that I personally experienced. Someone in my district, and I was an older person, did, and the answer was, gotta wait 15 more minutes. So that's, that was my own experience with this one. But that's, does that answer your question? There's three separate areas of our code, but they all kind of have their own carve-out, except this one. This one's for everything. This is for the entire city. It's not for everything, it's for the items listed, but it's for the whole city. So what you'll notice from here is it's not talking about people, people just generally making noise. This section is only talking about radio, television, you know, music, drums, but not people.
So just for clarification purposes, sorry, the ordinance that you had pulled up.
Yep.
On, on the screen.
Yes.
All of those do not have times associated with it.
So this.
At this point.
There's, the one in here is about operating snowmobiles, that no one can operate a snowmobile on the Rock River between 10:00 and 7:00.
Okay. So what I'm, so what I'm asking is, this that we're pulling the time out is only affecting E. Everything else, somebody could call and complain about.
Correct.
Any point during the day, because it's not associated with the time, based on what you're saying.
I'm going to rephrase it a little bit. So what you guys would be voting on is only removing 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. from, I'm highlighting the wrong thing, from section E. If someone observes someone riding a snowmobile on the Rock River at, let's say, 4:00 p.m., that's not between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. That would be fine. So likewise, I think there's another one in here about, yeah, this is a chronic one, at least it is in my neighborhood, people operating a lawnmower between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., that would, that would be fine. Or that wouldn't, it would have to be from 8:00 to 9:00, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So there are still things that have times. The only thing that this would be changing is there would be no time around operating or playing radio, television, phonograph, drum, musical instrument. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that, I just, so for clarification purposes for those, that it's, there are other parts to the noise ordinance that are not being affected, that whatever it states in that ordinance is staying as is, we're just changing this little section.
Right.
Yeah, and as far as I know, and Chief, you can correct me, there's literally nothing in here about people making noise.
Hmm, not at all.
So someone just outside, you know, drinking or eating would be in here.
That's, no, that's, I just wanted clarification on that, that it's just specifically for that bullet.
It is.
Bullet point.
It is. Yep. Just for E.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Call the question.
Okay. Which means we take the roll. That's fine. Romline, call the question. Yeah, he keeps us on our Robert's Rule code. Ritten.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Lipt.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Romline.
Aye.
Pash.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Ritten.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Lipt.
Aye.
All right. Next is resolution 9317. This is a resolution to appoint the new city attorney. This is here from me and the Finance Committee. I'll move to approve exhibit 9317. Thank you. Motion by Wagner, second by Barts. Questions or comments on this one? Should we take the roll?
Sure.
Okay. One and down.
Yep. Wagner.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Romline.
Aye.
Pash.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Ritten.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Lipt.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is exhibit 9318. This is a resolution to authorize a budget amendment to transfer $1,800 from the contingent account to Human Resources Capital Outlay. This is here from me and Finance. I'll move to approve 9318. Motion by Wagner.
Second.
Second by Lipt. Comments or questions on this one? Let's take the roll. Wagner.
Aye.
Wetzel.
Aye.
Romline.
Aye.
Pash.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Ritten.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Lipt.
Aye.
All right, next is exhibit 9319. This is a resolution to appoint a finance director, treasurer. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
I'll move for 9319.
Motion by Wetzel. I'll second that. Second by Wagner. Comments or questions on this one? Carrie. Wetzel.
Aye.
Romline.
Aye.
Pash.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Ritten.
Aye.
Barts.
Aye.
Lipt.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
All right. I believe the next thing is comments and suggestions from citizens present. All right, and we just have Andrew sitting on, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Wagner.
Justice.
Thank you. I know Tom's been quiet over there, but geez.
I just slightly hang in one second.
Although some Berkeley say I, we're turned at 7:37. Thanks, everybody. I'm like.